Open up a public forum. This is a chance for the community in public to address the school board. I have a few forms that have been submitted to me for people who would like to speak. I'll call you up in the order that I've received these forms. And just as a reminder, you have three minutes to address the board. So please make sure that you state your most pertinent information that you'd like this board to hear. When you first come up, please state your full name and address for the record. Okay, so at this time, Michelle Hardman.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Hardman and I live at 1323 Sterling Point Drive in Gulf Breeze, Florida. I have two children that attend Santa Rosa County Schools. One is an eighth grader at Gulf Breeze Middle and one is a senior at Gulf Breeze High School. I'm here as a mother and as a healthcare professional to sit there and speak more about COVID-19 and the devastating effects it has on our children, specifically to the quarantine which you spoke to earlier. And while we appreciate a lot that has been done, it's still not enough. These kids are suffering. We've had at least 10 suicides, not just this year, but we've had three suicides this year for kids. Two of these were at the same high school. One of them affected my family personally because the 14-year-old, and I repeat, a 14-year-old student committed suicide. He was a friend of my son's. So we aren't doing enough. Me and a group of folks have sat here and we've formed an organization called Tiger Point Community Outreach so that we can do more about suicide awareness and prevention. But it backs up going back to being quarantined. These kids, they work so hard with sports. This past Monday, we had wrestling tournament, the districts, at Gulf Breeze High School. There was a girl who beat a boy for the first time in our history at Gulf Breeze High School in the wrestling tournament. She goes on to state, she is a senior this year. So what happens if she gets quarantined before she gets to go compete? She doesn't get to go. That, it's unconstitutional. It's awful, these kids, the stress that they're under. Providing them an education is what they are supposed to be doing, the school board is supposed to be doing. We're not doing that. These kids get sent home. My daughter now, who is a senior, she is at home on quarantine. You know what she does all day? Walks around the house in her Crocs. Why? Because there is no educational means for her to get taught what she needs to be taught. It infuriates me to know that these kids put their heart and soul into sports, into school, and they get told, oh, guess what? You get to go home because you sat beside Suzie, even though both of you were wearing masks. That's not exposure. It is not exposure. CDC and the Florida Department of Health both state, wear a mask so that you can protect other people from getting the virus, right? That's what they say. It's posted on their website, it's posted in hallways. They wear their mask at school. My child comes home with a headache almost every day because they wear that freaking mask at school. I hate wearing a mask. I get dizzy wearing it. I can't imagine what they go through all day long. But they wear it. They still get told they have to go home and quarantine. Currently this morning, there were only eight cases at Gulf Breeze High School, but there were 87 kids quarantined. Eighty-seven. You mentioned some kids have been on quarantine up to three times. No. Some kids have been on quarantine up to six times at least. Six times. If you do that for 14 days, take those two days out, if it starts on a Monday, that's 10 days of quarantine time, of non-instructional quarantine time. It's, we can't have, we can't have this anymore. We've got to stop the quarantine. There are, Ohio State did a study recently, released it on January 29th, and said that there is no difference in these kids being quarantined or remaining at school with a mask on. So I implore you to please stop the quarantine.
Okay, next I have Len Cross.
Len Cross, 1586 Woodlawn Beach Road. How refreshing it was to see all those unmasked kids playing on the screen. And unless you want that to be a part of history, something that nobody ever sees again, then we gotta do something about this, okay? And like she said about the quarantine, I don't really, I see the quarantine as a canary in the coal mine. That's not, that's not the problem. It's the symptom of the problem. And the problem is the overreach. And this overreach is going, y'all cannot blame the board of the Health Department. They're not, you all are accountable for, to us, the parents, not to them. They're not elected and they have conflict, many conflicts of interest, just like the CDC does. There is an agenda playing for, if not just through this country, through all over the world. So you gotta open your eyes to it and see what part are you playing? And there's gonna be a whole generation that is lost, that won't even remember what freedom looked like. It'll be, it'll be something they have to watch on a screen if we don't stop the madness. Now, the quarantine thing, it just exposes the madness. That's all it does. It exposes that this is madness. It exposes that you quarantine a bunch of kids, they're not sick, and so the parents get upset. But that's just a canary, that's the dead canary that says, hey, this system's something wrong, okay? Because y'all should have woke up to this already. Why, why, why does it, why's it going on this long? Where are you getting your information from, okay? And our county is not like everything else. Florida is leading the way in the right thing to do. Let this county be a county within the state of Florida leading the way. Kick the dagum Health Department out of here. They're not accountable to the parents. Okay? And they, and they lie and they tell all kinds of half-truths and then you got the CDC, it's one mask, two masks, and I put on some pantyhose on top of your mask. If, now listen, this is, this is serious. We're losing this country. We're losing an entire generation of children. It's time for us to be grown-ups. Take, take the fear of yourself away and say, what's gonna happen to these kids? What are we leaving them? And what example are we setting for them? So let's do the right thing. You know, I come here, y'all are getting to be like family. I see y'all about every other week or so, I'm starting inviting y'all over. Maybe we can have a conversation about force, okay? History shows us that horrible things happen. There's been mass killings, everything happens. It starts happening when you start using force. That mask on that kid, on any of these children, you have to remove the hand of force. That mask must be voluntary, has, there's no option. You don't have any option here. You don't, you never had the right to make it, to make, you can make it voluntary, that's it. That's all you have the authority to do. You can, you can say, hey, parents, if you want these kids to come to school and you're gonna put a mask on them, that's your right, we're gonna respect that. But you never had a right to put that hand of force behind it. And when you start, when you start not respecting other people's rights and their personhood and their face, these kids are gonna grow up faceless, with no personality, no individuality, and not know who they are or where they came from if we don't stop it, and stop it now.
All right, next I have Skylar Pate. Skylar Pate.
Right now, I'm a senior at Navarre High School and I've been quarantined four times and I missed 37 days of school, two of which were just because of me. Everything else is quarantine. I ended up having to quit Loughlin because I just couldn't keep up with it because I was missing too much school. So I'm full-time at the high school, but I'm still very behind on all my classes simply because I just haven't been to school. When this semester started, I had four Fs, two Cs. And this is my last year to really do my work and keep my GPA up. But I can't really do that if I'm not at school. It's been real stressful.
Mr. Trejillo, would you mind having a conversation with this young lady and let's see that she has all the resources and support that she needs so we can help her be on track? Thank you. Okay, next I have Joanne Cave.
All right, Joanne Cave, 1978 Fountain Blue Court. Been here before. I'm here today to discuss the quarantine protocol for healthy children. This has got to stop. I personally have had my fourth grader quarantined once, my sixth grader once. It actually made him cry to have to leave school when I had to bring him home that day. And my sophomore in high school is currently on his third quarantine, November, mid-January, and then as of yesterday. As always, I never have anything negative to say about my children's schools, the teachers or the administration. I absolutely love Navarre High School. They are doing the best that they can do under the circumstances, so I always wanna put that out there. However, I can tell you firsthand that having a healthy child in quarantine is ridiculous. There's no substitute for in-classroom instruction, period. Do we get the assignments and some class notes, you know, to do the assignments? Yes. But there are no substitute for in-class instruction. I've spent many hours with my children while they are in quarantine, explaining step by step how to work a math or a geometry problem, how to balance a chemical equation. Luckily, I have a chemical engineering degree so I'm able to do the higher math and science when I have to. Helping with almost every subject, taking pictures of assignments, sending them to their teachers, and having them verify receipt so the homework doesn't get lost in the shuffle after being out so long. How is a working parent, I'm able to stay home with my children, how is a working parent or a parent with no knowledge of geometry or chemistry or a parent that just doesn't care, how are they gonna keep up, keep these students up to speed? The short answer is that they can't. It's not possible. I've heard from many people how their AB students are now CD students or worse, failing. You can't be on your third and fourth quarantine, and again, as she said, I heard the same thing, a Woodlawn student is on their sixth quarantine. They can't keep up with that. And by now, you would think we'd realize that if a child hasn't gotten COVID or gotten sick by their third or fourth quarantine, maybe, just maybe, that's not how it's being spread. You know what is spreading? Failing grades, depression, mental health issues, and suicide. Think about that for a minute. I also find it interesting that in all five times that I've had to deal with quarantine, the exposure date was almost always five to seven days before we were notified. If this is really a huge medical crisis emergency to get my child out of the school as soon as possible, then why was it okay the five or seven days before that? There are other school districts in the country that are foregoing the quarantining of healthy children. My letter from the school specifically stated, the one I received on February 16th at 5:41 PM, and I quote, "The Department of Health Santa Rosa has recommended your child quarantine at home." I can show you that on my phone if you need to see it. Did not say required, it said recommended. It is not a mandate. Our own governor has stated that we should not be quarantining healthy children. I propose that we work with the Department of Health and Department of Education to send the positive, COVID-positive child home and send a letter or call-out to the parent of children in close proximity, call-out to them, let them be aware. If these children become symptomatic, then of course they should get tested or they should stay home if they are unwell. I guarantee you the number of COVID cases will not change from where we are now. What will change is the mental health and academic improvement for our children. We need a school board that advocates for the students, not one that follows guidelines that are clearly not working. The time for CYA is over. We've been dealing with this long enough. And once again, as far as masks are concerned...
Ma'am, ma'am, you're over your time, so can you just wrap up your thoughts?
Right. We have about the same number of cases as neighboring counties that don't have the mandate. You have even admitted that we have a low transmission rate. Masks should not be a dress code situation. So, thank you.
Next I have Angie Klug.
I'm a little bit upset that Mr. Han walked out, so I wanted to address him and ask him to pay attention since he is the safety director for our schools. I can see him playing on Facebook and I've noticed that we don't have the captive audience of the school board members as a whole either. So I would like to ask for your attention and your focus. I realize this is very mundane and feels like it's gone on and on, however...
Ma'am, I'm just asking for you to just say your most pertinent information. We are all here, we are all listening to you, so I don't under... Sir, sir, we are respectful of all of the public speakers, so I ask you to give us the same respect. Ms. Klug?
Okay. My name is Mrs. Klug and I live at 4818 Foxtail Palm Drive. I have been here many times and I feel like it's getting very repetitive. Even Joanne could not stand up here with the same enthusiasm that she normally has and is very exhausted by all of this. And I'm sure you're all tired of seeing us as well. I apologize for not being there. Last time, I heard that you missed us. So we made sure we were here this time and we will make a more valiant effort to be there in the future. The pink octopus lady stood up here and said, find what you're passionate about and make a difference. That's what we're trying to do. The few of us that actually come represent the masses. I'm sure that you get emails and calls and whatever, we get that as well. So we're not the only ones, we're just the dedicated ones that are representing the rest. I wanna make that clear also. The wording that you're using on some things is still very wrong, and Joanne addressed some of that as well. But when you say that you're doing what you can legally do, that is a misrepresentation and I wanna address that for anybody watching and listening. You're doing what the DOH tells you to do so that you can be sure you get your funding because you're afraid of losing funding if you don't follow their directive, period. This is not a legal matter. Governor DeSantis has made that very clear and I am glad that I live in Florida, but please do not take the credit for our children being in school. I feel pretty certain if it were up to some of you, we would not be in person. So don't take that credit away from my governor. My child had COVID over Christmas. I knew that she had COVID because she came up ill, she had a sore throat, I felt like she was probably sick. I said, go to bed, stay in your room, I'll bring you some Tylenol, whatever. I knew she had COVID because some people she had been around text me and said, we have COVID. I didn't have her tested because I'm not gonna play the Department of Health games and then have my other kids have to stay home for umpteen, jillion, I believe it's probably 20 days? When you have an in-home exposure, you can go back on the 21st day? Not doing that to my other kids. It's a long time, whatever it is. If it's five days, it's too many. I was exposed to COVID at work. I work in a small office. I literally hugged this woman, ate lunch with her, stood there and talked to her the day before she tested positive and had symptoms. She had symptoms that day that I was unaware of. I all but kissed her on the lips and I did not get COVID. And I was not forced to stay home. I still went to work every day, got up, assessed my situation, I felt fine and I kept going. And I worked through it and she recovered and it was fine. It's not the Grim Reaper that everybody has made it out to be. When my daughter had it at our house, my 78-year-old father-in-law lives with us. He didn't get it, I didn't get it, my husband didn't get it, nobody got it. We don't even wear masks. I don't wear masks at work. Nothing. This is the most extreme overreach I have ever seen. And if you're telling me that you're speaking to the Department of Health every single day about this and you're finally telling me that they're coming up with some numbers saying that the cases in schools aren't as crazy as we thought maybe they would be, great. I am here to press you to press them to get rid of this. I don't want you to think that we've forgotten and we don't care. We're ready to get rid of the masks, we're ready to get rid of the quarantine, and I don't wanna wait until next school year to do this. Thank you.
All right. Next I have Crystal Boyet.
I'm Crystal Boyet, 117 Indiana Red. Thank you Superintendent Barber and members of the board. I'm a homeschool mom of nine years, mother to two sons. One, actually, who started public school brick and mortar this year, or 2020 for the first time. I have another son at home who's still schooling with me. I have a PhD in medical science. I'm a wife to a local physician practicing medicine for 14 years. It is with great urgency that I come to speak with you today. As you know, we're facing a great pandemic the world over. I submit to you that at the heart of this pandemic disease that we face is a fear pandemic. Also contributing to isolation, poor physical and mental health, delayed medical care, and most importantly, death. We fear what we cannot see or do not understand. We fear the unknown. Unlike its namesake, 2020 for many people was not a year of clear vision or even clear thinking for that matter, but fear and division. And this is why I speak with you today, to share truth and clarity of vision regarding the source of many fears, COVID-19 testing. There are currently two types of tests approved to diagnose COVID-19, and these are referred to as diagnostic tests. There, there's the antigen test and the molecular test, and in the interest of time, I'll discuss only the molecular test, also known as the PCR test. There are rapid PCR tests that take several days and there are tests that, there's rapid tests and tests that take several days, but both are inherently the same test. They take material from swab samples, look for little bits of viral genetic material by copying it over and over, either until the machine detects it or it reaches the end of its predetermined cycles, whichever happens first. So what does a positive PCR test mean? It means you are now officially a COVID-19 case. However, it is important to recognize and acknowledge that while these tests are capable of detecting very small amounts of viral genetic material, they are not capable of determining if the material is from an intact infectious virus. Thus, a positive test indicates either live virus or part of a dead virus. Simply put, it's like finding a whole cookie in your child's hand, one that is about to be eaten or maybe one that they're gonna share with someone else. So, sorry. Simply put, sorry. That versus finding a cookie crumb on your child's cheek and, sorry, I'm very nervous. Thank you for having me. It's like a whole cookie versus a cookie crumb. The cookie crumb represents a cookie that used to be there, that was eaten or was shared, but it is not an intact cookie, much like these tests. Both live virus and a dead virus can both result in a positive PCR test. The limitations of these tests are common knowledge among scientific circles and acknowledged in the manuals for each laboratory test. In closing, I share this information not to diminish the danger of this virus or to suggest that you throw caution to the wind, but to lessen the excessive fear which comes with daily news of positive tests and cases in our schools and our communities. I encourage you to rise above the fear, to think clearly and justly as you make decisions that affect the lives of so many. Second Timothy 1:7 says, "For God has not given us a spirit of fear, but He's given us spirit of power, love, and a sound mind." Today, I thank you, I thank you, I thank you for your job. I can see it's very difficult. I thank you for it. I encourage you to seek truth, fight for the truth, okay? I challenge you to walk worthy of the steps. You're called worthy in the steps of your calling, in the positions that you're in, with a sound mind. Thank you for your time.
Those were the only forms I received. Is there anyone out there who would like to speak? Just come forth and state your name and address, please.
This is Haley Smeed, address 6146 Autumn Pines Circle in Pace. And I'll be brief tonight. I don't really have a whole lot to say to the quarantine. I personally have stood before you and I've shared with the community my stance and understanding on everything ranging from the Florida statute to the executive orders that exist from the governor. And one of the things that I've been able to take away from it is I've interpreted the information and I know where I legally stand in my child having a public education and the opportunity to attend in person. So while I haven't been impacted since September, since all of this nonsense started, I haven't had an opportunity to really need to address it in a personal manner, so I just encourage everybody else to really be self-aware of what exists in executive orders when it comes to the community because I know earlier you spoke to it being a law that we're going to in regards to the quarantine. However, if you really read into that information in depth, you'll actually be able to understand, or maybe you won't depending on what your interpretation is of law and how to read statutes. But the one thing that I've gathered is that a long time ago, last year in June of 2020, when Governor approved the 2139 executive order, that right there clarified everything I need to know when it comes to my child's public education and that it is an individual responsibility for us to adhere to those CDC or OSHA guidelines and all of the concert efforts that were made in regards to that executive order were done to include the President, the state health officer, the state health officer which you all are saying is part of the emergency order in which this law exists that does not truly exist. So again, I'm not too worried about the quarantine, but we'll go all the way to the top of the food chain if it impacts my children. However, the mask thing, I wanted to bring up. So as you all are aware, because you approved the policy that's been placed into the dress code, it says that the board members are essentially making the community health standard determination that a mask is required. So I was just curious if there could be any feedback provided tonight and how is it or what authoritative piece do you have in this that actually says that a board member can determine when a community health risk exists? Because a mask would be a medical decision and as you all would tell us in any other normal circumstance, you don't make medical decisions for our children. So how are we still holding this to them in a policy when it's basically stating the reason it even exists is because you all have determined a community health risk exists? Is there any feedback you all can offer on how that's being placed into a policy of a dress code in a county school, in our Santa Rosa County Schools? How are you able to legally hold that over their head and write my child a referral? Because as a parent, I'm able to make that medical health choice for them. In any other circumstance, that would be the bottom-line answer. Your school staff members can't even provide our children Tylenol unless it has been signed and released authorization form of when it can even be dispensed. So if this is a community health risk and a medical mask is determined by you all, which I already know executive orders exist that are far beyond your authoritative abilities, how can you turn around and place that into the dress code and continue to hold that against them? I asked my children, do you wanna take off your mask and go to school? They did and they received referrals. We took the punishment for what they decided they wanted to do that day. It wasn't me forcing them to do it or anything of that nature. But my question imposed to you is that there's another executive order out there, which I know you all know that this exists. I've emailed your attorney that's here tonight, I've emailed every single one, maybe not every single one of you, but certainly Dr. Barber and Mr. Rossdick when he was in place, to inform you that these are constitutional rights, these are executive orders.
Ma'am, ma'am, you...
Okay, perfect. So, thank you, I appreciate that and you've given me ample time. So again, out of what I've provided today, do you have any feedback to me as an individual on how you're determining this as board members as a medical...
Ma'am, all of our COVID-related policies are very specific on the website. We're over your time right now. If you wanna email me another time, that's fine, but we're...
Can your attorney speak to that? How is the school board able to determine a community health risk exists and trump an executive order of a governor?
The, I don't have the policy in front of me, but the policy doesn't trump an executive order. The policy states within it the standards and the laws upon which it's based. But to give it to you in its most fundamental sense, this board has constitutional authority and is charged with the safety and security of students. Part of the safety and the security of students is maintaining student's safety, health, and wellbeing. So by adopting a dress code, this board is doing what it has statutory authority to do. So I don't read the board's policy, its dress code on masks as making a medical opinion or trying to override the authority of the governor. That is this board's legal right. That is this board's legal right to create a policy to protect the safety of students.
So you're telling me that a school board, our Santa Rosa County School Board members are able to make a community decision to impose a medical mask?
He's answered your question. He's...
I just want to make sure I understand it clearly. Is that what you're saying? That they are able to override and basically make a community health standard?
Let me, let me share one thing, and then we really, um, and, and we've got another public speaker and then the rest of our school board meeting. There's a public health advisory, the Florida Public Health Advisory, which says that we need to wear face coverings indoors and outdoors where we can't social distance. That means, you know, six feet apart. So within our schools, if we can be six feet apart, we're allowing children to take their masks down. We're allowing employees to take it down. It's when we're within six feet, and that is in the Florida Public Health Advisory. So we need to move on, and I thank you for coming to express your...
Well, I just want to point out that public health declaration is nothing but an advisory from the state health officer. And that twenty-dash, what, one-thirty-nine executive order, it also overrides that information because it was in concert efforts with the state health officer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here to address?
I've driven up and down ninety-eight like eighteen times today. I'm Becky Slemaker. Uh, I live at seventeen sixteen Shellfish Drive in Navarre. Um, and I just wanted to touch base with you all about a few things. Um, my child personally, personally was sick last week. Um, so he was out of school. I kept him home because, you know, that's what we're supposed to do when they're sick. So I kept him home. He was out Monday, Tuesday, all week. Um, but on Wednesday, I got an email from the school district, from his school, saying that he had been exposed the last Wednesday. So he had been in school all of the last week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So he was out sick. Took him to, I had taken him to the doctor that Wednesday anyway, um, and got a note that he could come back to school Tuesday. I got the health department call. They approved him to come back to school. But if it's such a big deal, I'm going back to what somebody else stated earlier. If it's such a medical emergency, the kids that are exposed are out of school for seven to ten days, how is it that we're not getting a notice for a week after? I understand that they're backed up. But if they're that backed up other kids because they've been there all week anyway? It doesn't make a lot of sense. We've, we've lost common sense this year, a whole lot of it. Um, you know, they're getting sent home for headaches. There is yellow pollen outside if you look at it. So here's what parents are doing. If your child is sick, they're not telling the teacher. They're texting us, and we're going up and getting them so that they can come back to school the next day as opposed to missing three to five to seven to ten days. My kid personally has been sent home once with a stomach ache and a headache, and once the second week of school because he had back-to-school crud. Both times, he would have been out, at that time it was fourteen days. So both times, he would have been out fourteen days had I not taken him to the doctor three days later to get a COVID test and make sure it was negative so that I could send him back to school in three days versus fourteen days. In all of the instances that my child has been out sick, I have emailed teachers, we have followed up. His teachers last week told me, "Don't even worry about the schoolwork because we're all so far behind." It is ridiculous. This week he went back, and there are five students in three of his classes. That is absurd. How on earth are these students going to take the FSA test this year on all the knowledge that they're missing out on? How are we, the school boards, the schools, the state, going to hold these students responsible for FSA scores when they didn't take the test last year, when they haven't been in school half the year? How is this going to be okay? Our teachers are losing morale. Our parents have definitely lost morale. And like Angie said, we are a small, small portion of the parents that we talk to on a daily basis. I get eight to fifteen or more phone calls, texts, or messages about quarantined kids, about the schoolwork that they're missing, about the process, because nobody explains the process to them. So those of us that have gone through it, we tell them. I, I mean, eight to fifteen messages. I'm doing a full-time job for these parents, and I'm happy to do it. But something has got to give. We have got to get our common sense back. So, thank you. And again, I do appreciate everything that the school district and the board and the teachers and the administration do. I know it's hard, but we got to do something different.
My name is Brandon Favano, two-two-one-three Ceros Court, Navarre, Florida. I want to challenge you all to step up and be an example, not fall victim to this fear-mongering that is nationwide that has nothing to do with your health. Because if it had something to do with your health, it wouldn't have a mask involved. It would have much ser- much more serious protocols put into place. The fact that I watched a circus show here tonight. Y'all come up here and shake hands with kids but stand next to them with a mask on for a picture that they can look back in the future and go, "Oh, there's that year that we all went crazy and lost our sense." Come on, people. This is ridiculous, what y'all are doing to our children. How many people or how many kids have died in Santa Rosa County from COVID? None. How many kids have committed suicide? And you want to tell me that you're doing the best that you can for our children's health? Piss on that.
Is there anyone else in the...
I'm Shannon Webby, sixteen thirty-one Kawhi Court. I'm going to speak to you about the quarantine and the grades, the work, okay? I have a senior. He is on his third quarantine. You talk about how they're going to put zeros in the grade book and so they get the work done. How do you think that, that helps them? It doesn't. Let me tell you, my senior, after his first quarantine, we contacted teachers, we contacted the counselor. We got nothing, absolutely zero work, zero, until he went to school. And then he thought he was caught up, and then there's more work, and then there's more work put in two weeks after that first quarantine. Then he looks in and he sees zeros. He missed the next Monday because he woke up throwing up because he was so stressed out. He missed the next Monday because he was throwing up because he was so stressed out, not because of COVID, because of stress. Then, this third quarantine, he wasn't even at school that day. But you try and get me to talk to the Department of Health to tell them, "He was not there. He was not there that day because we were away celebrating my husband's birthday." But yet, he's still on quarantine. So you know what? He is no longer at that school. He is now on virtual to spend the rest of his senior year in virtual school. That's stressful enough. But I want you all to think about it. Think about how you're affecting these kids. I shouldn't have to be home dealing with my child who is sick, stressed out over the missed work. This is ridiculous. Ridiculous.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address?
What are you all going to do about it?
Certain?
That's what I want to know. What are you going to do?
If there are no other, uh, speakers, public forum comes to a close, we're going to take a five-minute break.